Next thing in the objective is to consult with the town attorney about the social media policy.
Joining right at the moment here, this is Paige. So Paige, if you're there, you're up already.
Good evening.
There we are. So this is Paige. You asked me to have her come. Hope you have any questions for her. I don't know. I don't think she really has a presentation per se for you. I think she's here to go over with whatever your whatever your concerns or questions are.
Personally, I don't have any concerns. I read this as a person who would have to follow these guidelines. There was one thing that I didn't understand the way it was written. It's under the third page, appropriate use of personal associate, social media by town employees. That first paragraph, it ends with a sentence. This policy governs social media activity to the extent that such activity either undermines or interferes with the ability of the town to carry out its responsibility. Is it either? Is that right?
That you can, you can ask her. She, it's, it's her, she, she amended my draft. So this is her. Perhaps I could address the question to her and see if she has a response for you.
Sure. I'm just trying to take a quick look at where precisely that language is. I'm, I'm looking at a redlined version of this document. So I'm going to probably put it into simple markup mode here. You said that you were looking at the third page?
Yes. Appropriate use of personal associate, social media by town employees.
So, go ahead.
Yeah. Do you, do you have that?
Last line of the first paragraph. The last line. Okay. Yes. So, um, yeah, as you stated, um, there's um, a provision in here that um, essentially articulates that um, in the event that social media activity interferes with um, the workplace, um, that can, can um, enter into kind of the realm of, of, of speech that um, is not necessarily um, uh, across the board protected speech. Um, so of course, all individuals have, have um, First Amendment rights. Um, generally speaking, um, in the, the public employment context, um, an employee continues to have those rights. Um, but an employer, a, a public employer, um, has the obligation to balance, um, the efficient operations of, of the, of the workplace, um, with an employee's right um, to speech. So that language, you know, essentially addresses um, in, and um, reflects kind of that, that balance. Um, an employee, um, a, a, any individual can, can speak on social media and, and this, this language um, uh, clarifies that to the extent that the, that there's a, a concern on, on the town's part, for example, that it, it relates to um, speech that, that could undermine or interfere with the ability of the town to conduct its, its um, um, its duties. Um, and, and this kind of um, it, it's, it relates to um, Supreme Court case law that kind of um, provides a balancing framework for, for what constitutes um, employee protected speech um, and, and measures or, or ways that balance between um, the employer's interests and the employee's speech.
Well, oh, I didn't understand the word either. I, I guess, uh, maybe neither nor, but I guess, uh, it, I, it either makes sense now that I keep looking at it.
Understood.
As the English teacher in him.
Yeah. Oh, I have a lot of respect for that, having been an English major once myself.
I have a question for Paige. Paige, um, we have uh, a number of different departments, um, probably the most, um, the biggest user of uh, social media is our fire department. And they spend a lot of time and effort um, posting uh, what they're doing for the public, um, how it is that uh, they're responding to emergencies. And um, in the past, uh, folks have been allowed to comment on posts that have been put uh, up by the fire department. How would this policy affect that operation?
Sure. So um, you know, to, I, I realize that you've kind of raised a specific question. Um, so generally, um, in considering um, social media, um, town social media, um, town operated social media, um, the, the first question is, is what um, what type of forum is it um, for a First Amendment analysis? Um, to the extent that social media operates similarly to your town website, um, you are not necessarily obligated um, to um, provide an opportunity for discourse. Um, however, if, if the intention of the um, the page or the website is to invite discourse, um, that kind of changes the analysis. Um, so if it's intended only to provide information, um, that's kind of one, one mechanism that you can use social media for. If the intention is for discourse, um, then uh, all, all posts um, would, would likely be um, uh, viewable, accessible, not deleted, um, uh, able to be um, yeah, used and, and responded to. Um, you, you do not necessarily need to allow for comments, um, if it is um, only um, externally facing, um, to provide information.
One of the, one of the workarounds is a follow-up to that question, Paige. One of the workarounds that's been suggested so that the public can comment and participate and respond to the fire department's posts is uh, to allow the sharing of those posts to another site. Maybe the fire department's auxiliary branch or the fire department's nonprofit uh, sister organization. Um, uh, would that be acceptable and would then the town have any responsibility to uh, you know, maintain records and uh, make sure that all the posts are available and properly moderated and uh, keep, keep uh, all of the freedom of information, information that would, would go along with it being on the municipal social media page?
Sure. So I, 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 I'm not sure if we're talking about a hypothetical or a specific situation and I, I want to be mindful of um, uh, having, having this discussion more in the general informational sense. If, if there are more specific questions, it, it may be, uh, this may be a conversation better suited for executive session. Um, so I, I did want to mention that. Um, what, what I can, you know, im- impart from an informational perspective uh, with respect to FOA questions. Um, FOA considerations um, are to the extent that you're talking about materials that the town has in its possession. Um, so i- it's really a question of, of whether or not um, the, the document or the material or the information you're talking about is, is a, a, a town material or document. Um, that's, that's when FOA um, considerations are triggered.
Okay. And I am talking about hypothetical. There's nothing specific here that uh, would, would mean that we're going to be talking about anything that would be employee related.
Sure.
So if our, our current workflow is that the, the fire department's social media page allows for commenting. And if we were to modify that workflow so that uh, the fire department's social media page does not allow for commenting, but that material, whatever the, whatever is posted, it could easily be shared to some other page that is not town-owned, that is managed by the nonprofit uh, support group for the fire department.
The auxiliary.
The auxiliary. Um, would that be FOA compliant? Would we, if, if no commenting was allowed on the municipal page, but uh, the auxiliary decides they want to allow commenting and manage it themselves in a, you know, reasonable way. Um, would that be, would the town have any FOA responsibilities? Because part of the, the rationale behind this social media policy is that we're, we're trying not to have to ask the taxpayers to pay for the software and a moderator and all of the overhead that might be involved in terms of maintaining the records for FOA and the commenting that might go on if we were to allow commenting on a municipal page. So, so would that be a reasonable workaround if uh, if the content were simply, if, if someone from the, the auxiliary decided to share it to their page and allow uh, commenting at that point, would that, would that satisfy FOA?
So I, I guess I, I would, I would consider um, the, those pages to be wholly separate from one another. Um, the, the town uh, wouldn't have a, a specific or certain obligation with respect to the auxiliary's page. Uh, because that, that's managed um, by the auxiliary. Um, it, it's not a town entity per se. Um, so I, I would say to, to your question about what the town's obligations are, I, I do not, I don't see an obligation on the part of the town to be managing or archiving materials with respect to the auxiliary specifically. Um, whereas with the fire department page, that is an official, provided that it's considered to be by the town, a town official page um, with, with public record considerations associated with it. And I guess it to, to, to kind of follow up on that, um, the, the auxiliary page would be managed by the auxiliary. So if, if they choose to share something, that's their, their prerogative to do so, I would think. And should they um, offer the opportunity for comments that that would also be, I apologize if, if I've spoken over somebody.
Nope. Nope. Not at all. And do you think we have a comment here? Open comment from the fire chief.
Hi Paige. Uh, the MRI fire chief. So I think you can see me. Um, just so you, you have a little background, um, Monmouth Fire Department, but uh, our Facebook page is actually managed by one of our firefighters. Uh, it wasn't built or designed by the town. Um, it's privately uh, managed. Um, so that's one issue. And I don't know if that still applies because we market it as a fire department page. Uh, so that's one thing we need to try to clarify. Two, this workaround uh, as far as capturing data, um, one of our officers has an IT background and actually has spent a few hours and built software to capture all data on our Facebook page or any type of FOA request. So we don't need to spend thousands of dollars on software that's out there. We actually have it and we can do it right now. Um, thirdly, it's never been an issue for the fire department. I think it's been other departments that have had issues with social media. We've never had an issue. Um, I've talked around with several of our mutually departments. They all have Facebook pages. Really, this, out of this full entire policy, and I really appreciate um, the write-up that you did, uh, addressed a lot of my other concerns. But really, the only one concern I have is this shutting down the comments. Um, I, I'm still objecting to it. I, I think just putting information out, having it one-sided. For all that we do for social um, gatherings in town, uh, interaction with the public, I just think shutting off comments would be detrimental to, you know, our firefighters and our citizens. Um, so if we can try to work around that, that would be, you know, best for us.
This doesn't allow that.
That policy, uh, it's right above that section that you just talked about. I'm the public comment and interaction with town social media. The public comments on town social media accounts are not permitted. Police, police should ensure that comments are disabled on all posts. So it's basically saying all town uh, social media accounts should disable comments, which the town has already done. So police department has already done stuff. I believe Hudson Hall has already done so. We're the last remaining one that I know of. I don't know if the Quirks has one. I'm not aware of one.
No.
Um, probably doesn't want to have one.
I think that one of the concerns is, and I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from there, because feedback you get i- is positive feedback. The feedback we get is not positive feedback. It's the nature of the beast.
Right.
However, it only takes one time.
That's right.
And then the town gets involved, the attorney has to get involved, and Justin and I have been through that. Took about four months to resolve that last issue we had um, in the FOA requests and it, uh, it's not fun to deal with. And, and I think the town's just looking out to protect itself and protect the, the fire department for that one time it does happen.
Is, is there a way that we can modify the name of the existing Facebook page so that everyone knows what it is, but it's not an official municipal page? Paige, would that satisfy, if, if the name is not Monmouth Fire Department or Monmouth Fire Service or however it is you if it's privately owned though, if it's a privately owned page, what I'm, what I'm understanding Paige to tell us is that a privately managed and privately owned page uh, is not a municipally owned, uh, not, not a, not a page that is municipally um, obligated to follow this policy.
Yeah. So um, I, I guess there are, there are a couple of thoughts I have. Um, based on the fire chief's um, uh, information, it, it's my understanding that uh, a current employee operates the fire department account and that the, the title of the page holds itself out as a, a town fire department page. So I, I think it would be reasonable to um, interpret that from a, from an observer's perspective, that it is holding itself out as a, a town social media page. Um, if uh, if the town's position is that it does not constitute um, an official town page, um, or, or if the town does not want it moving forward to, to be considered or constitute an official town um, Facebook page, then I, I would recommend ensuring that steps are taken um, to, to uh, to demonstrate that it does not represent the town. Um, based on kind of what's been described to me at this point, it, it does certainly sound as though it holds itself out in that way and is regarded in that way. Um, notwithstanding the fact that it's um, currently managed by an employee and that the follow-up question to that would be, is the employee authorized to manage the account on behalf of the town? And those are really questions for the town to, to make a determination on. Um, you, you, you can proceed in implementing a policy that relates to the page or you could um, uh, choose moving forward to not um, hold that page as to be considered an official town page. Um, it's, I would say it's, it's really up to the town. And then we can certainly talk about, um, you know, what that would look like in practice, depending on, on, on which choice you, you proceeded with.
I mean, it seems to me Paige, that uh, the, the the net effect and the purpose of this page are very positive for the town. And the fire department has, you know, been super effective at using this page, among other things, to recruit volunteers, to do, you know, all of the things that a volunteer fire department does that benefits the taxpayers and the town itself. So, um, so I, I mean, I, I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel, but I think this is, this Facebook page and allowing the public to interact with uh, the posts there are a net positive for the town. So if there is if there is some way to uh, satisfy our, our clear need to minimize our FOA obligations and liabilities, because we don't want people to be spending time doing make-work, responding to FOA things that are just nuisances. Then I would be, I, I would, I would ask maybe the town manager and the fire chief to come up with some alternatives for renaming the page, for uh, putting an official disclaimer somewhere on the page that says, this is not an official municipal page, something. It, or uh, putting something in the policy that says except for the fire department, maybe it's a fire department volunteer page or something. I, you know, uh, something.
The only thing, I, I apologize. I, I didn't mean to, to chime in. The only thing that I would raise, um, in addition to, to what you've described is that um, I, I, there, there may be town obligations with respect to the page as it currently stands to the extent that at this time it is, it is or maybe, and, and that's ultimately, I, it might be helpful to discuss that further. Um, to the extent that it is regarded as an official town page, um, there are obligations up to this point that exist um, for the page. So that's just kind of another point to keep in mind as you.
Uh, uh, understood. And up to this point, we've certainly uh, um, know that there are obligations that we've got. Um, but i- it, it is also clear, based on some recent experiences with other Facebook pages, that perhaps this is not something we want going on into the future.
And I wholeheartedly agree with Chief Furlan that it just takes one. And I've got, you know, from a article that I found from American City and County, multiple, you know, cases where people removed comments or blocked comments and there were lawsuits. So there's several cited cases here that they bring up and um, that's not something I ever want to have to deal with in our town to go through as um, you know, financially or having to put up with that. So um, I think for me, doing the simplest thing and not allowing comments because that's the policy. And if they want to repost them to their own private page to allow comments, then they can. And that is the way that it's handled, I think, for the majority of people. Because as I said previously, I found, you know, several large departments that don't allow comments. Scarborough doesn't, Freeport doesn't. So obviously there are departments that don't allow comments. So.
Are those departments volunteer departments?
To is that with, and I'm assuming he manages the page.
He does.
And he's, by being a volunteer and being paid by the town, who's an employee of the town by extension. So it's, I get it. And it always has done good. I mean, I'd be from it. It's always been good. But in the world we live in now, like Paul said, takes one thing. And, and it, you know, I don't want to see that reputation that you guys work so hard. You know, we can still put it all out there without having the risk of, you know, one silly person saying one bad thing.
So all it takes is one First Amendment violation and the town owns it.
Yeah.
I think, I think what it's going to come down to is we're just gonna, we're gonna discontinue the page and we'll just post stuff on our personal pages. And can we do that based on this policy? Because we're representing the town. But that's a whole other issue.
Well, let's ask Paige. Paige, how, how would that workaround work if the uh, employees of the town decided to post what's the, the content that's currently posted to the fire department page to their own personal pages? How would that uh, what would the town's obligations be there?
So uh, just so I understand the question, um, uh, I think that you had, I think that there was a um, a proposal um, about uh, discontinuing the current page. Is that, is that part of the hypothetical in your question?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So um, the, the first thing that I would raise is by discontinuing the page, the, the content, to the extent that it is considered by the town to be a town page, would need to be preserved. Um, the, the second part of your question, um, it, you know, if, if, if employees were to engage in um, in their personal capacity um, online, um, one of the questions there would, would first be, um, are employees engaging in their official capacity and is that authorized? And is it um, viewed by an observer or regarded as speaking on behalf of the town? That's one consideration to keep in mind. The other piece, whi- which I think you're asking about is the FOA consideration. Um, if, if the material in question or the document or the post, if it is in the town's possession, that is a public record. Um, if it is a uh, an, an individual in their personal capacity posting online, um, that may not necessarily be regarded as um, a material in the possession of the town, such that it would constitute a public record. Um, and I know we're kind of talking in a general hypothetical here and the analysis could change based on the facts, but you know, what I would say generally is um, the, the town has an, a FOA obligation with respect to, to materials in its possession. Um, does that answer your question?
So would they get in trouble posting stuff that they post now on the town site, on their personal site? Would they be in violation of this policy?
That was my question.
That's the question. No, because the idea is, 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 are you, are you interfering with the town's business? I don't think that anything you post about, you know, showing your guys at fire scenes or, or the beach party or any of that, i- it's not interfering with anybody's job here, yours nor mine or anything.
I'm just not going to follow the rules. Like, I'm not going to say anything in objection of something town government or, you know, go out on a pedestal and, and speak out of, you know, whatever.
Has changed in the title.
Just, is, that's, that's what's going to end up happening.
The fire department. Fire chiefs.
Or auxiliary page, yeah.
Or the fire department museum page. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah. And I, I honestly, I can't speak on that after the auxiliary because they're not present. But you guys, I guess.
We don't have to decide tonight. We can, we can think about it again, please.
Does do not delete comments problem solved.
Turn off, after allowing some, this happened. No, see, they're not supposed to. That's the problem is if somebody is, is monitoring like Facebook and the instant that you post it up there, the comment gets up there before you can turn off posts. So then sometimes there's an individual that will like sneak one into the, into the list and then we so that's kind of where the issue comes is when everybody's trying to do it in a different way is no, the idea, to answer the person's question, they're not supposed to allow uh any comments to begin with and they shouldn't be being selected. That's the idea is that it's once somebody says something on there, pretty much no matter how offensive it is, it gets to stay there as on the town page and we can't.
So vulgarities and?
It would be just like if someone said it in this room, right? I mean, you can ask them to leave according to your your meeting policy, but you can't take the, you know, once the comment's out.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna subtract it from the video.
Correct.
And that's what several of these referenced cases are about, you know?
Even if we're not gonna delete comments, then we're gonna capture the data because we have the software to do it all. Still not good enough because the, what if something happened? Fire department's social media site.
Well, we're not shutting it down. You're just choosing to, you're choosing to shut it down yourself because you don't want to turn off the comments. So that is your choice. Our choice with the other departments and what they've done is to turn off the comments. So you're more than welcome to have a social media page without comments. And that's what Chief Furland has done. That's what Dennis has done at Comston. And that's what the library has done. And that's what the town office has done. So.
That's what the town's telling us to do. And this, you know, if you enact the policy, that's what it's telling us to do.
And that's what I would be comfortable with because we are here to make sure we're doing the right thing for everybody in this town. And we need to protect the town from litigation. And that's what the policy is. We can't say if this, but not you. You can, but you can't. Because you don't have him hold, you know, monitoring your information. So it's gotta be all or nothing, you know? It's not gonna be pick and choose for me.
Last meeting, I, I thought you were the one that spoke that you could have comments as long as you had a thousand dollar, three thousand dollar software package to capture those.
Well, if that, there's a package, but it would be, but that's his package. That is not a town.
It's also, he, he's also the person, we keep referring to him as, as employees. Well, we're not on the payroll when we're doing things on Facebook. I mean, he does it all on a voluntary basis. He manages, he started the.
But does he get paid by the town for showing up to fire stuff? He represents the fire department and gets a paycheck from the town?
He's an employee of the town, Chris.
Correct.
But he's not being paid to be our IT person. And, and our current Facebook page is not produced by the town alone. It's produced by Jason Mills, my assistant chief, who's our IT person. And at the last meeting, as Craig, you said, if you guys want to spend the three thousand dollars and budget for it, you would be in favor of that. Well, he went, spent a couple of hours, created a software program to capture that data. So you're actually saving the town three thousand dollars. But they're saying different.
But I think that that would be something that the town would have to decide if that's the package and if that's acceptable and if that's gonna work. I mean, I, I mean, I'm not an IT person, but that's not for me to decide. But I think that, you know, if, if we have a policy and he leaves and he doesn't administer the page anymore and that goes away and he moves to, you know, Timbuktu, what happens then? We can't say, okay, it's all right now, but it's not okay later. You know, it's, it's gonna be one thing or the other. So, you know.
He moves and I have the budget three thousand dollars for.
So.
Take advantage of it while we have it, you know?
But.
I think the issue is that, is that the town would have to be in possession of the data.
That's right, right.
So if you have a way to load that onto the town servers so that, so that if we get forward, it can, it can be sent readily to Paige and be in our possession. It, it, don't let me speak out of turn, Paige, if I'm not, but we, we have to own all of the comments that are, that are, that are on there. You can't then keep it on your computer at home because I don't, if you quit, I can't, I can't force you to give that back to me, right? Because now it's on you, it's in your personal possession. So we would have to have a way to, is this, is that, is that true, Paige? Is that how that would work?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's currently stored in immutable storage out in the cloud that I could give access to any party that would need it. My house could burn down to the ground and do your job and it would still be all out there.
And yeah, I'm not an IT person, so I'm just trying to say, from my understanding, is this the town has to, has to physically possess whatever it is so that we can reproduce it at will on, when requested.
And the town would need administrative access to the Facebook page itself?
Uh.
Yeah.
I think so, but I, I guess I would defer to Paige on that. I, I don't really know how all this stuff works. I'm, I'm not an IT person, so I, I don't know.
So I just want to understand the question. Is this um, in the event that the, that the page continues or in the event that the page is discontinued?
If, if the page were to continue as is?
Yes.
Would, would there be, would this be a suitable workaround? If we use uh some custom written software to capture all of the data and uh, and that data were to reside on the town server with, with the town manager having mutual access, mutual administrative access to it? And that the town would also have mutual administrative access to the social media account itself? So that it became a town-owned social media account? Right? Administered by the assistant chief as it currently is? Would that, would that satisfy uh our FOA obligations? And would that satisfy you as our uh, uh legal representative knowing that um, we've got full possession and that we have the ability to produce documents if they're requested?
Yes, um, and I, it sounds that hypothetical would be consistent with um, the, the language of the draft social media policy. Um, you know, to the extent that the town has designated an authorized user to manage the account, um, then, then that, that sounds um reasonable based on my reading of the policy. The the follow-up question then would, would be um, how the town chooses to proceed with, with comments. Um, I, I think that it's been raised that one um, kind of pathway has been um articulated for other departments in the town. And I, my, my understanding is that this policy is intended to apply town-wide. Um, and so that's, that's the only thing that I would, would mention in terms of, you know, compliance with the policy uh in terms of implementation. Um, to your question about FOA, um, it, that that um arrangement sounds like one to me that would allow for the town to, to meet any potential obligations under FOA.
So if we were to modify the proposed uh policy to include a provision that says we've got and a designated departmental administrator with data backup that has the town manager in the loop with both access and ownership administration responsibilities, then it seems to me like that would, without singling out the fire department, if another department wants to designate and appoint a administrator that does the data backup and provides access and does all of that for the town manager, then that would be something that the select board could consider modifying in this proposal.
Can I just say, can I have a, a conversation with Dennis after that? Because Dennis is taking over the town, if you will, not the police and the fire because they do their own thing, but Dennis is taking over basically all of the town outward facing Facebook stuff. Like that's, he's taking that over. So like, I'm not even going to probably post anything on Facebook anymore. Dennis is gonna do it for me because I don't like using these things. And I, and I'm not very good at it. So I don't want to do it and Dennis likes to do it. So he is going to do it for us. But let me just check with him to see if he like has the capacity and all that, all that kind of stuff. I don't, I don't want to put more on somebody. Uh, the last time that I had to manage these types of things was when I worked in the city of Bath and it was half of my job was to just manage Facebook and all of our outward facing Instagrams and all that stuff. And I wasn't very good at it then either, but nobody was back then. So people didn't notice. But now everybody wants, everybody wants fancy graphics and all this stuff that I can't do.
And just along the question, they, they, it would still reside in the cloud and not on the server.
Because that opens up the server to vulnerability.
Right. So it would still reside on the cloud.
It resides wherever you want it to reside.
Exactly. And Dennis.
Could, could be the
Could be a
The co-administrator.
Yes, a number two.
A silent administrator.
And I think, I think that.
Dennis, right. But my only question is, you know, knowing nothing about IT, I mean, there are, there are you know, um, there's software out there that does that and that's what they're marketed as. So as the uh, um, what's the term I'm looking for? As the devil's advocate, how do we know that this program that he wrote does what it needs to do? Because it's a program he wrote. It's not a marketed program, software package. So, you know, I'm just being the devil's advocate because that's what my job is to do, sitting here.
That was gonna be my next question.
So.
How do you know that any marketed software that you buy is doing? In my, you can see the code. We can sit there and test it. We can make this do anything we want it to do. But if you buy something from someone else, you cannot see what's gonna be behind the scenes there.
Well, I'll put in a FOA request.
Not a lot of code, actually. It's really quite simple the way it all works.
Hey Paige?
Yeah.
Have you done this for other towns?
Um, advising on uh social media policies?
Yes.
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
What do they go through? Do they go through anything like this?
So I have seen this question come up with respect to, what comments you mean, either allowing them or disallowing them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, this does come up in other municipalities. I, I think that it, it was raised by another uh select board member a bit earlier that this can raise litigation and that's certainly true and it's, it's something to be very mindful of. Um, I have seen um both approaches in action, one where comments are fully disabled and one where all comments are allowed. Um, ultimately, uh, what I would say the rule of thumb is, is to be consistent um, with whichever option you choose. Um, you, you really can't um pick one or the other and have exceptions to that rule without um risking um uh issues down the line. Um, so either allowing all comments or allowing no comments um would be the, the best practice.
As you're saying, so.
What do we do at this point?
Tonight, you don't have really an agenda item for you to consider anything. So really, it needs to be put at, at, at another meeting. It was just a constant, the, the title was just to consult with Paige to get your questions answered. So the, the, I, I think the Paris thing to do so that the public knows you're gonna make a decision on it would be to table it to your next meeting, which will be, I think, about a month from now unless you want to meet on the night before Thanksgiving. I assumed the answer was no. So it's not on your calendar right now, but it, it, everyone's happy if you want to.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be hoping so.
I figured some people would have things that they would rather view.
I'd like a motion we table this till another time. Second.
There's a motion by Kent, one, and a second by Joe to table the uh approval of the social media policy until another meeting. And, and you know, we have a meeting on Christmas Day.
Yes, exactly. So.
I told, that's not on the calendar either.
Thank you, Paige.
Certainly. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Are you waiting till Kent comes back to vote?
Oh, yeah.
And to win. We don't need to.
I don't think so.
We don't have to wait for it.
I, I don't think so. I mean, if you know what his intent is.
All those in favor of motion? Raise your hand, please. Thank you. Uh, next is approval of minutes for October 30th, our last meeting.
I think that they looked fine. I didn't see anything exciting. Do I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 30th, 2024?
Second.
There's a motion by Chris, second by uh Mark, approve the minutes of uh October 30th. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next the department reports and Dan, would you like to first?
Then again, uh, last, last week, we had a, a couple incidents, um, involving uh a little dog that fell into a well. Um, I have a good field story that we rescued, rescued the puppy and.
Start on Facebook.
It was on Facebook.
I was gonna say, lucky I brought that up. That, that was a good field, you know, uh, story. Put on social media. And uh, a little later that afternoon, uh, we had a little fire out on Big Island on uh Annabask Lake. That being just a shy of, yeah, oh, point five eight acres. Felt like it was 10 acres, but um I was very fortunate to have uh Winthrop's, uh, their new Marine Six there. Uh, that boat is really a nice, nice rig. Be able to transport several firefighters and equipment. Uh, did two trips out there and uh, were able to get the fire un, you know, contained. It took us a few hours to get it under control and then save several structures on the island and, and I think uh, getting up there quickly with the boat was, was probably uh what's, what actually saved the island, not just the firefighters, but you know, if we wouldn't have got out there as quickly as we did, I think it would have spread with the wind that picked up that afternoon. So, um, so that was last week's incidents.
Um, there you go. Why, step out of the room and?
Yeah.
We were, that was conjecture about the origin, so.
Something happens.
Stuff happens, yeah.
I did talk to the main forest service though and uh, yeah, they were, should have, our, our quick response and.
It was about 30 minutes from the time the call was made to
I wasn't.
Like, eat people stepping off the boat. That's pretty amazing. Yeah.
Um, Halloween went really well. Uh, we ended up with 731 kiddos, uh, going through the doors of the fire station uh to trick or treat. Um, real crowded downtown. I did talk to the chief about this, that uh, maybe in the future, we should think about shutting down Main Street for just the, the busy hours of like five to seven. Um, we, we hear it all the time from parents and certainly uh firefighters, they, they see it firsthand. Uh, and it was really bad this year from the traffic congestion with construction, but um, it, it would be nice just to, maybe between Blue Road and, and uh, I don't know, maybe Maple Street, you know, that, that downtown section. We, we could divert traffic. you know, that downtown section, we could divert traffic and certainly help the PD and the fire. I'm sure we could, we could reroute some traffic and make it much safer.
I would go to Academy. It was, I mean, I was there.
Oh, you either further up towards there.
With the fire, with, with the police table at Comston and people were just doing the whole circuit all the way up to Academy.
Even up to Welch Avenue, because when I came through, I got here right at 4:30.
Yeah.
When I came home and it was already starting. So if you stopped it at Welch Avenue and they had to go down to Maple Street and then they could go across Berry Road and come up.
And it seemed like the construction was actually a blessing in disguise because it slowed people down, required people to slow down. I mean, there was, it was, I mean, of course, it was 70 degrees that day.
I say that because Sylvia had over 400 kids. So if Sylvia's got 400 kids, then they're walking up past Welch Avenue.
Yes.
So if there's, you know, if they're getting that many all the way up there, it has to come up from Maple Street.
It was, and there were people from Litchfield and Winthrop and.
Turner.
Turner, oh yeah, it was just a.
It was a madhouse.
I mean, it was thousands of people.
Yeah, I would just count kiddos. I mean, yeah, two adults were, you know, family. I had a couple thousand people there.
Yep.
All right. Yesterday I attended a virtual hearing with OSHA. This is actually going to go on for three weeks. I'm not going to attend it for three weeks. I did it yesterday for the open remarks and some of the more larger organizations and fire services that provided testimony. This is all to do with the new, new rulemaking for emergency response. I think I talked a little bit about this several months ago and it's still in the works. It's still coming down the pipeline and it gets inevitable. It's just a question of how much it's going to, they're going to drop the hammer on fire service. A lot of people talking about small departments like ours, believe it or not, they said population of 2,500 or less makes up 50% of the volunteer fire departments nationwide.
Right.
So you talk about like the town of Leeds and, you know, they just don't have the budget or the taxpayers, what, what they're going to mandate to the rulemaking, it's just going to shut their doors. So hopefully they, they have some common sense and, and dial it back a little bit. FYI, if it comes to our town, we might have to double or even triple our budget just to keep up with some of these mandates. And then you talk to most stations. So we'll, we'll know probably several months from now and it, it sounds like there's a big fight to try to get them to maybe extend the compliance period from six months to two years is what they're currently saying. Of course, you try to get it to maybe 10 years, you know, the credit. Why these meetings? Doesn't mean that they're going to agree to it. So a couple of things to note on the calendar, tree lighting is going to be happening on November 30th, on a Saturday downtown. Fire Department's going to be serving on Cocoa again. And our Santa breakfast is going to be on Saturday, December 7th, 7:00 to 10:00. Have breakfast with us, sit on Santa's lap. Any questions?
Who's going to be Santa?
Santa.
Yours is a Santa.
That's funny. Santa's passing.
That's who Santa could be, Mrs. Fox.
You want to go next or?
The snowman on frozen.
A lot.
A lot.
Several things to update since the last time I was here. We've gotten a lot of work done, pretty proud of you half of us. For you that didn't know, Tyler's been out for 12 weeks, had a little baby back at work. Very good news for Tony. Also me and Shaw, we hired one, we had him for a month and he got the job over in Winthrop. So we went from really good shape to right back to where we've been. I actually have a couple leads on prospective employees, one mainly for the winter that has plowing experience, which is a key component for us, being down a plowed driver is very detrimental. So last time I was here, we had in-depth discussion about gravel roads. Since then, we've done copious amounts of work on all but one of them. One was actually in pretty good shape that we didn't have to, but the shoulders over years of plowing were, were mounted up. The ditches, the water couldn't get to the ditches. One of the, the biggest things you hear about when you build a road is drainage, 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 and if the water can't get away, that causes problems. So we removed hundreds of yards of fill from the ditches and shoulders on 7.8 miles of gravel road. You know, some of them took longer than others. I mean, Carver Road, between the two pieces of it, we were four days. Lot of material, so.
I could tell you're up on, I was up on Peas Hill yesterday and very impressive.
We did Peas Hill, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, we had to just, we just replaced the cover, we found two covers and we didn't even know just, well, I didn't and the guys didn't remember. So we had to replace one of them and the other one we did get cleaned out, so it appears that that's going to work fine. So we replaced five covers over the course of the last couple of months. Wagon Road, we had to replace one, obviously Peas Hill, we did one up here on Academy, we did one on Berry Road. So five different cover replacements. Some of those are difficult because we are shorthanded and when I don't have the whole crew, we can't do traffic maintenance and traffic control. So there's days that I planned on it and we haven't been able to do it. So our schedule kind of is malleable, bounces around. We did finally finish up Wagon Road. We had a difficult time getting a pavement contractor, which everybody knew. Then I, Chief Royal steered me towards the guy that did the museum down here. I asked him about it, I go, who did that? He gave me the number, guy came, looked at the work, he was a couple of weeks out. We helped him, that was part of the deal. So that got, finally got taken care of and pretty good contact. He was good to work with and it'll help us in the future knowing now that we have somebody like you do a road cross cover, you can get it paved in. And I'm timely man, because everybody knows what those are like when they don't get paved in for a length of time. I think people just don't need to driving on Wagon Road being in, in rough shape. So we've had several good comments and phone calls thanking us for that, which we don't, we don't get a lot.
Facebook page.
Yeah.
All positive, I'm sure.
Tony would have all positive comments, yes. We all did the summer, but feeling bad the winter.
If you drive around and you see guardrails, mounds of dirt in front of the guardrail, so that's another drainage issue. We just started cleaning a couple of those off. One of the bad ones down on South Monmouth Road that we did a couple of weeks ago, that'll help us. That's where, you know, those are generally in the belly of a road and if the water can't get off, you get those winter storms and heavy rainstorms in the summer, you get heavy puddling and, you know, a puddle three or four inches always has a bad result when somebody hits it going 40 miles an hour and people do not slow down, you know. I was going to say the welcome signs are done, but the welcome sign is done. We have one left, the Winthrop end. I thought it was getting done this afternoon, but I drive out here, didn't get done, so I'll be asking questions. We finally got the darts removed, that went smooth, kind of late in the year, but we caught the weather good, so hard not to this year. We did, they had the day of caring with all the leaves. We came in Monday morning, I don't know if anybody went by the public works garage, but there was just mounds and mounds and mounds and bags and bags and bags of leaves. So we got those taken care of, the school there already contacted us. I said, if we have to go pick them up, wait wherever, we'll do it. It's better if you drop them off, they dropped them all off. So it really was, was an easy, easy job for us. Painting, we got a painting machine, we did the crosswalks on Academy and Main Street. We did a bunch of park install painting, we did the, the town office, we did down at the boat, our beach area, the boat launch area, we're going to, we're looking, we're trying to turn it, trying to make it fit, kind of been a hurdle. So I got frustrated. And we'll make, we'll figure it out by spring, put it down.
Problem because to make it around like where the rocks are and stuff, you're going, you're going to lose more spots than we initially thought because you can't actually maneuver around the corner because the rocks and the pavement just aren't the right place, you know, if it was done the other way to begin with.
It's just.
But anyway.
If it's fixed by spring, it'd be fine.
Yeah, we'll have it ready by the time, we're, we're putting the darts back in. So now we're getting prepping for winter. My favorite, get everything ready, of course you find, you know, sand is working when we put it away, it's not working today. So we started dealing with those issues today. Always want to have the, the gear ready for, before Thanksgiving. You know, several years in the past, as everybody knows in Maine, it snowed well before Halloween. So just watching the forecast and keep seeing 50 degrees 10 days out makes me happy.
Not very consistent.
I got, so I get these long projection forecasts, so three months out is warm, the second section of the winter is, they say is snowy, so I'm hoping they're half right.
Yes, we want more warm.
Hey, was there some work being done at the Annabaskook Dam?
So they've started doing inspections. So we lowered the water down quite a bit.
Yeah.
And then we blocked it off so that the scuba divers could get in there safely and do their inspection. That happened a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
So, yeah, we helped them out with that. Yeah, actually went smooth. You know, we, we had the boards all in place, they got there at 8 o'clock, they called them at 10 o'clock, they're all done. So that went well. Obviously, a lot of water comes out of that little sluice way and it's dangerous for those guys. So having stopped was a key component to their, to their getting their work done. I told you I'd report back on gravel road maintenance, what we need to do. So here comes the bad news. I did a, I did three different roads, Ward Road, Perkins and Peas Hill, which are the three that are in motion, either gravel. So over the years, rain, wind, plowing, it all removes your surface gravel. So I figured how much gravel is it going to take us to fix these roads? So Perkins Road's about just over half a mile long, Perkins Road is down South Monmouth, rough shape, probably the worst of all our gravel roads. That'll take about 700 yards of surface gravel, that's between $18,000, $20,000 just in gravel. That's us doing the work. Ward Road, lot of traffic over there. We get a lot of complaints, people cutting through, I think 90%, probably more than that, 95% of the complaints are people that don't even live in Monmouth, they're just driving through, it's rough. That'd take about 400 yards to fix that, that's 10,000 to 13,000. Peas Hill, 1.2 miles long, to put the material in, take in excess of 1,500 yards, I'm going to talk in $42,000 to $50,000 just in gravel. So, you know, when we start looking at how are we going to fix roads and what do we want to do, it has to be the understanding that it's not cheap. You know, gravel, I used to buy gravel for $5 a yard, easy for, for quality surface gravel. Now it's, you know, they all go to tons, so it's about $18 a yard now for, for cross gravel. You know, I get asked about the gravel that we have over in the pit, that's bank run gravel that gets screened out, it's round rock, it doesn't pack, it's really sandy, not conducive to surface gravel and compacting and not turning right back into potholes or having clay migrate out for it because you can't get it compacted. So I just wanted, wanted to give you the info I, I had. We've hired a transfer station manager. Joseph's doing a great job. He lives in, he actually lives in, in Monmouth and he takes quite a bit of pride in that over there. We've really gotten a clean dock, but there, there's some issues. The wood debris, we get very little money comes in, very expensive by the time we ground it. We just spent $23,000 having the pile grumbed up and removed. If we took in $5,000 over the course of the year for what that pile is. So this is opinion piece right here, but we're subsidizing contractors or people that are rebuilding. I don't know, everybody must have put a new dock in this year, as many as we had. It's like, there couldn't be this many docks in Monmouth or Wales. So we got little Mrs. Jones that has two bags of garbage that pays her taxes on her house, but she's subsidizing the contractor that's bringing the, bringing the refuse, shingles. We get shingles come in, big trailer loads of them. What we're allowed to charge is $100. I guarantee you they're charging the whole one at 300 just to get rid of them. And then it costs us, they're very heavy, you put them in the bulky waste now, the demo. So that's another expense, very expensive for the, for the town. The demo, I don't know, we must have a mattress company delivering mattresses because there's 10 to 12 every weekend. We get bolts, we get hot tubs. You know, somebody drops off a hot tub, it takes us an hour by the time we get it demoed and into the bin, plus the weight of it and, and they, they pay $50. Well, every time I send that truck to, to Loston, they come, you know, they come and pick it up. It's a $200 delivery charge, you know, the truck and plus the weight. So we're, we're spending, you know, $6,000 a month on, on demo stuff. So I'm just bringing this up, it's something that I've started to work on some, but it's a, it's an issue that it's become a, a major expense for the town. And, you know, I'm kind of all about fairness, so it's, I'm giving you the information, you guys tell me later.
It's been an issue for a long time. I mean, that demo, I mean, seven years ago, we were talking about that, right Doug? I mean, we don't make money at the transfer station and it's, it, it puts us as, you guys as, it puts you between a rock and a hard place because you don't want to freeze out the people that need to throw away pressed wood.
Oh, there's a, there's a definite difference, but everybody must have gotten a new refrigerator installed this year, judging by what we took in. That all adds back because we actually get money for that. Couches, chairs, mattresses. I mean, just go buy them.
It was unbelievable on Sunday. I went over there Sunday. It was, it was crazy how much stuff was piled there. There was not, you couldn't have put a hole. In that roll up. It was full.
So I just wanted to bring it to you.
It was out to the pavement. It was crazy.
How are the compacters doing over there?
Well, we got one we've taken out of service. The floor is rotted out, so can it be fixed? Yes. Will it be expensive? Yes. A couple of them are getting older. I thought we had a, an avenue to a grant for one. So I started digging in the grant, you know, get down to about line ten and it can't be used for infrastructure like a contractor. Like, okay, let me crash because that option's now gone, you know, that's. So is there options there? Be a lot of work, but fine to find one. But, you know, the compacted tractor trailer now is in a hundred thirty thousand dollars. We're running two all the time. Obviously, we have the trash. We have recycle. I can touch on recycle for you. So it costs us, I, I, I'm not sure. It's forty-four or forty-nine dollars a ton to get rid of trash. Recycle's a hundred and eighteen. So if somebody wants to fill their stuff, not in the recycle in the trash bin, go right ahead.
Of course, you realize that, you know, the trash goes and gets incinerated in Lewiston, which only takes, what? Couple hundred bucks to get to. The, the recycle goes to Portland, which is more expensive to transport. And then about ten percent of the recycle ends up getting burned, just like the trash anyway. And we're paying more than double to dispose them.
I'm not going to look at you anymore and taking the recycle. You can take it all.
Well, I understand that, and I think everybody does understand the, the concept of recycling and, and the benefits of it. You know, and I can remember back when it started, you had your, your bucket for your cans, you had your bucket for your glass, you had your newspapers. Back when they actually printed on there and, you know, whatever else you, you had and, and it got pitched out that way. And the glass commodity would be good sometimes. Sometimes a canned commodity would be good. I mean, this, this is Joseph over here. People bring in a bucket of cans. He doesn't let them put it in recycle. He takes it down to the metal bin, throws it in the metal bin because we're actually getting money for, you know, I mean, what do we get? A tenth of a cent maybe for a can, but you know what? Better than paying for it.
Mark, is it twenty twenty-six yet?
Not yet. They've been notified though. Tony, while we're talking about dirt roads, I had a resident from the Blake Road that was wondering if there was any chance it could be graded before winter.
Yeah, so Blake was actually the one road that was in best shape that we had. And it has been a while. It's on our list to, to do. So the guy I had hired was doing our grading, did a very good job. Our grader operator is also our mechanic, so I've got him tied up, getting trucks ready for, for winter, but yes.
I, I've traveled it, and to be honest, most of the road is in pretty good shape. There's, there's some potholes. Some of them are three to four inches deep.
I was on it.
Even just to fill, to fill the potholes with reclaim or crushed ledge or something may suffice.
Well, so that works great until we get your first weather event and then it pops it right out. Really, the only way to fix a pothole, you have to grade to the bottom of it, cut, they call it cutting it out. You get rid of it and then you have, you know, your compaction is steady across it, so you're not generating a pothole again. It's just like in the winter when you go put cold patch in. You go and put a cold patch into a, into a pothole, especially a, a deep one, first freeze. Then it warms up, melts, freezes again. The ice under it pops it right back out, so you're right back to where you were. So, you know, cold patch is a necessary tool for us. It's an expensive tool, but it only lasts, you know, you never, any, any, every, you know, I don't know how many salespeople are here, but they all, their patch is the best and it lasts the longest and it stays well. In, you know, north of twenty-five years, I've never found one that really works, but, but yes, we'll.
There will, there will be several residents.
I know there's a bad one at the end where people, where people, when they take off, they're not gentle on their gas.
It's a pretty good speedboat there.
Any other questions?
Add one more. Where are we at with winter sand? Do we put sand up this year or?
No, we got all kinds.
Running on what we got.
We're running on what we got.
Perfect.
I'm taking that money and then use it on salt. We're going to up our salt usage. I'm a big proponent of salt. And how it's used and, and, you know, it'll be a training session for, for our crew over the course of the winter. But, you know, we'll have a better product. Anybody else? All right, I got a patient I'm going to go take care of.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Hope your patient gets well.
I see five. Just show, show wisdom.
Forget that.
Touch on what Chief Roy brought up is the Christmas tree lighting. It was thirty of. I reached out to Audrey Walker. Yesterday and had her email a request in to the town managers so we can get that road shut off in the hour that they're going to do that. And that would just be that one section of the road right in front of the museum.
Which I have right here if you guys want to take action on that, so the chief knows that you can do that.
I make a motion.
November thirtieth from four to five P M.
That we close Main Street in front of the museum from four to five P M on November thirtieth.
There's a motion by Chris saying goodbye, had to close Main Street during the Christmas tree lighting. All those in favor?
Thank you. I'll, I'll email it back, Justin, just to have space for the.
Okay, thanks.
We have, has there been a prize of the M O U?
I, I emailed it and I put a paper copy in front of all of them tonight. Oh, you, you're talking about the, the letter you're sending out? No, because it's, it's with Paige. She said she'll get it back to me tomorrow, so they haven't seen that yet. But you, you're, you're free to mention. I just want to make sure the town attorneys.
Just trying to work out a, a agreement with the union in regards to going to a non-standard work week in order to effectively manage the twenty-four hour coverage. One week they'll be working thirty-six hours and next week they'll be working forty-eight. Per union contract, anything over forty-two hours in a week is paid at time and a half. So we sent out an M O U to the union to adjust it to a non-standard work week. So we were to accumulate, I mean, overtime after eighty-four hours instead of forty-two hours. So it's just a, a shift in the understanding between the union and the town to alleviate some of that overtime and.
It'd be eighty-four hours every two weeks.
And the M O U is really, it, it, it's functionally effective until June thirtieth because we're going to be, we're starting contract negotiations again. So we would roll that into the new contract, but to get it to be effective before then, we'll need you to approve that. But right now it's with Paige, like I said, when, when she says it's good, we'll. I'll bring it to you.
Bring it to your attention so you understood what the reasoning behind it and what the need is there. As you can see, I'm participating in no shade in November, talking twenty bucks because I'm a little early. And Tony was still here because I just wanted to tell them two weeks ago, we had two snowstorms up in the Allagash. It's happening up there and I'm down here. We met, we met for our second meeting of the Solid Nation Committee last night. The letter that's in front of you is just a, a letter addressed to the communities, just outlining why we, we're looking at this and, and kind of bring some input back on the community feelings on exploring further, going further with this, how the community feels on. Tomorrow I will be posting it out on our Facebook page, which doesn't allow comments, but there are, there are, my email address is on there, so if anybody wants to comment, they can respond to me by email. And I'll, it answers all the questions we have. But I wanted, wanted this process to be as open and transparent to the community as possible. So they would have an understanding on, on what the need is and why we want to do this. Basically, that's all I have tonight unless you have any questions.
So the idea was this, was that we wanted the elected officials to be aware this was going out first, so it went to you. And I believe Anthony sent it to the Winter Council. So they're aware of it before it goes out onto Facebook and then, you know, wherever that goes after that. We just wanted you to have a copy of for that.
We'll have a, some sort of public hearing.
We're ready to present something, yes.
One, one of the, one of the key components on this is to get to get the select board and the Winter Council and the, the committee we put together, together in a workshop one day to discuss any issues that you may have, they may have, we may have. The help move this on so that it will get out with the public and then we'll have a public comment.
Hopefully, the committee and the two elected bodies will sort of unify around a plan that then can be sort of pitched. So everybody's kind of giving the same kind of idea, whatever that ends up, whatever that end product is that everybody kind of agrees. So obviously, it's, it's easier if everybody's rolling in the same direction opposed to having the two bodies or sections of each body partnering with each other. So we're hopeful that we can get you all together and we can try to figure out a way to come up with all the issues that we think may come forward for people to discuss so that we kind of have some idea what to then sort of pitch to the public.
This is new ground. I mean, there's only two other communities in the state that I was in. And I've reached out and had conversations with both, both of them. And one of the, the, the key elements i- is to keep the public informed. Allow for them to ask questions. And just remain as, as open in the process as possible going forward. Because everybody's going to have concerns. And start trying to get the information what their concerns are, because we're not going to see everything when we sit at this table. We're not going to have all the answers for the new endeavor. And by opening it up and having these questions asked, that'll, that'll educate us on where we have to concentrate.
What are the, what are the two communities?
Far Harbor in Mount Desert and Rockland, the Rockport camp. Southwest Harbor just entered into an agreement with Trenton. Southwest Harbor i- is a lot like, like us. The select board formed with government. Trenton, you know, on the island. So one of the problems i- is you have a response from state police, you have a sheriff's department down there. You're talking actually half of our response time because there's only one way in and one way off that island. So it's Tremont approached Southwest Harbor and ended up paying Southwest Harbor forty percent of their budget to cover Tremont without, and adding any more personnel on, which has become problematic for that community. Because now they realize they need more people to cover that community. So that's another one that's, that's just in its infancy. It's been going for about two, two, three months now. So that, that's another one I've had a fallback on. I've talked to the chief down there. Southwest Harbor and the problems he's having with it and how he's dealing with it. So it's new, new territory. I think, I think you'll see, not just in law enforcement, but across the spectrum for emergency services. That coming with, with, with what's coming with down the road in the sense is that this sort of working together is, i- is going to be much more prolific, prolific going in the future because that's how we're going to have to survive.
I saw that a lot in Texas. It's more, because they have very small a lot of volunteer fire departments and they're much more, you know, and they're spread out and they're much more working together to be a clear force.
Yeah, I mean, the problem with the volunteer fire departments is that they're aging out.
Exactly.
And if it weren't for the programs that they run here, we wouldn't have the.
Totally true.
The input from the younger people that we do and some of these other communities don't have that. And we, we have, we have times we dispatch for Melbourne by N S A F where they form their lakes region because they don't have the personnel during the day to respond to events, you know. And I, I see with the new regulations coming around, it's going to become even more problematic. And I'm glad I'm not in their shoes because they've got a lot of issues they're going to have.
They're going to be fair. You lost, they force it down your throats.
And I think one of the big advantages that Monmouth has had i- i- is that you're not providing ambulance services. Because the communities that are relying on their volunteer fire departments to do ambulances, they are shutting their doors because they don't have the people to, to, to board that ambulance every time someone falls or, you know, there's just so many more calls that, that come with that. Ambulance service across the state is about ready to collapse, e- e- especially in the rural areas. They have absolutely nothing. The state has no plan. They're doing nothing. So until somebody figures out what to do with that, it's a major problem. So like here, we're kind of fortunate because we, we have kind of this whole model that's been here a while with the Winter Ambulance Service. But that's really what more communities need to do.
And I think that's across the country too right now.
Yeah, it's true.
Houston, they just can't, they can't respond to calls because they don't have the, they don't have the personnel. They can't get the personnel to respond to calls. When I had a conversation with a fire, one of the full-time firemen there and told them what kind of a, a volunteer fire department we had here. He went to do some research. He was like amazed because, because I had the conversation about how we, you know, work so hard in this town to have that. And, you know, they can't get full-time employees on their ambulance service. They can't get it on their, they can't get it on their police departments. They can't get it on their fire departments. Because people aren't necessarily going into those fields anymore. And so they're trying to.
Yeah, and I think it comes down to the dedication of the leadership of the fire departments to recognize that and it's like I'd try to keep doing and going out into the school at a early age and selling this and having the junior fire department. I, I just think these guys have done a hell of a job. Can be complimented for it.
And, and engaging on social media too.
Yes.
Keep ripping you on that.
My mother always told me, I'm so sure about that.
I think we're all right. I'm, I'm, I'm right now soliciting. So just to confirm, so we, we did, we did, the Compton Hall project is about done. I think you all were invited next Thursday. They're going to have like a little breakfast show off the, the project. So what we had committed to with the, with the ARCA funds originally was that a hundred thousand dollars of those funds was going to be used for that project. I just want to confirm that that is still, what, I mean, it's taken a long time. That was, that's still the idea. We have a, we have a lease agreement that is approved to do the whole amount, but I can adjust that by that, I can reduce it by the hundred thousand. If that's, if that's still what you want to do. I just want to confirm because, you know, we talked about. if that's still what you want to do. I just want to confirm because, you know, we talked about this, what, eighteen months ago, two, twenty months ago? So I just, I just want to make sure before I, you, you know, before I utilize those funds that that's still the game plan. It, it was originally, but.
Is there, what does that leave us from the ARPA funding?
So if we use the hundred thousand, there's probably still close to ninety or a hundred thousand left. Some of that was sort of dedicated, the, the items which we are allowed to pay, use that money for, it's already, already baked in the cake because we asked the voters for it. So it has to stay within certain buckets. So one of my ideas, I, I was, I was going to come back to you at your next meeting and actually have this laid out for you, but if you're asking, I'm happy to do it. We purchased new computers and laptop mounts and things like that for the police cruisers. We took out a three or four, three-year lease on that equipment. We also did the tasers under that same agreement. I could use that money and just pay those lease agreements off early so we don't have to carry them for the next couple of years. So there's, there's, there's one pot of money. The other pot of money was originally going to be to do some infrastructure improvements in the town office, namely windows and things, but as over this eighteen-month period, I've, I've discovered that the condenser units out back that run our air conditioning are now, they're using an old type of coolant that's not supported anymore. So if, if those things get to a, a point where they don't work, they can't be really fixed anymore other than minor stuff because they can't re-refrigerate. They can't use that material. So they would have to start replacing them. So I have already had two vendors and I have one more coming in to give me a quote to replace the three condensers with a heat pump unit that will use our existing ductwork. Our ductwork in the town office is wrapped. It's insulated so they can run cool air through our current ductwork. So we don't have to put, you know, like mini splits all over the building. We can use the current, I don't have any prices for that yet, but I've, I've gotten quotes. I was, I was going to bring some of this to you when I have it sort of more ferreted out. But the hundred thousand for Compton, if you want to use it for that, that's fine. We have authorization from the town to, to do a lease purchase agreement, which I have for that whole amount. So if you have other things, our problem is that we're kind of under the gun at this point because we, we, we have to have the money committed by the end of the year.
And I think it was a hundred hundred thousand we'd set aside for the North Monmouth Water Project.
They've spent just about all of that at this point, but yeah. There's still a little left, but yeah. So between that and Compton, that was the major chunk of it.
Okay. And the rest of it was, yeah, somewhere in the ninety to a hundred range.
It's somewhere, I didn't, I could tell you in, in a week or two when I have the final.
Maybe we can put it on our, on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And what is the deadline that we're facing?
We have to figure out to commit it. I'm trying to get all the options available to you with the town's authorization, the things that I think that can fit in those buckets. And then I was going to bring those sort of to you in December and, you know. How do you want to use that? One of the authorized uses was to put the money towards, when Harold was here, he said, use whatever is remaining after these projects to go into the paving reserve. So you do have that authorization from the townspeople as well. So if we get to a point and you wanted to say, okay, take the, take, you know, take fifty thousand and move it into the paving reserve, you can do that too.
Paving slash your road?
Anything really. It had to do with the paving reserve account, which, which includes any type of road maintenance. So it's, it's a flexible reserve as long as it's used for roads.
And, and when do we need to tell the federal government what?
The reports aren't due until sometime next year, but they want to see that the money is committed to a specific use by the end of the year.
December thirty-first.
Yeah. You have to make decisions by the end of the calendar.
Okay.
Do you get pricing on windows for the town office?
I did. They were prohibitively expensive.
Well, I'm just thinking about, you know, if we're doing something for heating and cooling, then windows follow along in line with that.
Where we're, what I, what I had sort of thought about was trying to get some prices on the ones that don't function.
Function, yes.
Uh, one of the big problems is those big windows that are in the old Select Board chamber. Obviously they're, you know, twenty feet tall, they're they're big, big bucks. And neither one of those work, but I was going to just, my sort of inclination was to make it so that every workspace could at least open a window. Because right now it's not, it's not true. I, I think I'm, I think I'm one of the only ones that has two functioning windows in my office. The rest of them can't really open. Cracked condensers are gone or they're just jammed shut. And I'm trying to run around now to make sure that I have some options for you. I mean, I know what some of these items cost, but I don't want to just kind of force feed that stuff to you. I want I want you to have some options about what you think is the best thing to do with it. But we have to work within the buckets that the, that the townsfolk's already approved.
So, uh, Select Board reports.
Yes, um, tonight Joseph Petrowski is visiting us.
Yes.
He is a county commissioner and he represents this part of the county or he's elected from this part of the county. We had a recent meeting and we're trying to urge county and municipalities to have more of a dialogue. So he's here tonight. And maybe you have a few minutes to say?
I'd say one, two, and three. We've talked about all the same things that you talked about today. Started in a dress auto with opera. Thirty-first is right and very tough on it. It's been a recommendation for windows. It's Anderson renewal. We never thought that, but we had a major problem with windows. We lucked out. This is kind of history. I was elected a couple of years ago. And as soon as they found out what the election was, the next week they had a meeting and they spent twenty-four million dollars, which was all of our compromise. I was not too happy and I still am not too happy. We hadn't spent it all because in some of those cases, we had other deserving communities. Gada, which is one of my communities here, did very well. So Johnson Hall, when you go down there, or the Boys and Girls Club, we've got millions into that. But we've also got millions into strange things that developed everywhere. Somehow my other smaller communities didn't get the money. At one of the areas that I looked at earlier, it was what you were doing in North Florida, the water situation. Primarily deserving, we had the money. But the good thing happened was some of the projects that were built came in there, it came under the amount of money. So some money didn't return to us. And we have basically used all of that money in trying to keep your taxes down. For instance, we had no room really for our sheriff's department. Counselor O'Donnell, you're Selecting O'Donnell, he was in the Hill House. The room that he was in was where our sheriff's department was when I arrived. That and downstairs. And of course, one good storm came along and water came down through everything. Generally a bad situation. But one of the smaller buildings on the, the Wither Road, which was, had a, a law office in there, came out for sale. We were able to buy it, right? Go to the sheriff's department. And what would happen a couple of weeks later? A second building. Right across the street, on the same side of the street. We were able to purchase and put the registry of deeds as well as emergency management in there, which fulfilled our need to get separation. Our first building in the area that we're talking about, not the two new ones, was built in eighteen fifty. The next new one was eighteen ninety. Actually, the next one I thought it was eighteen ninety. The Hill House was somewhere back in nineteen thirty, nineteen forty. And all of them have significant problems with air conditioning, heating, electricity is the old norm and, and the two parts there. We found that out because we just had a chimney two months ago. It was thirty feet high. Fell over in a storm, went down through the roof in the old courthouse area. Didn't get all the way to the bottom. Luckily it stopped where the fancy courtroom is where absolutely our main Supreme Court meets frequently and everything. But in the amount of water that came in, we went right into the walls and found no insulation, electrical problems. We had the oldest style that you could have for bringing the electricity across or, or bringing anything in. Millions of dollars will be paid for a lot of it by the insurance company. But we were kind of like forced to fix what was there and not continue on. So that's good news because everything we have done up to about five million dollars was money that would have been passed on down to the taxpayer because that's the way the counties work. We have no, real, we have some revenue from deeds. We have a little bit of revenue from probate. But, you know, it's miniscule compared to what the budget is. And when you read the sheriff's letter, it's talking, it's just a little bit, yeah, I, I talked a lot to the sheriff too, so. When you talk about staffing, the need for this, a problem for employment and everything. Quite frankly, right now today, our biggest problem is overtime. The sheriff's department is not just patrol, it's also the jail. They are over a million dollars above overtime at this point of the year and it doesn't end until June thirty. It's a reflection of people not wanting to work in those situations. Competition for jobs. When I looked at that thirty-four dollars that he mentioned, you know, with one office and what they were getting and everything, I said, that's good. I wonder if we can get that. It is, it's just, and I don't blame people. You have a chance, you have a skill, you go over and try to get the best money that you can in. Benefits. The benefits for the county, I'm going to go up, these are health insurance benefits, devil benefits, are going up nine percent. And I, I was on the school board for twenty-five years, so I know about all those things. You never know, it kind of rocks up and down. But I'm still optimistic. We're doing things to keep the cost down. And I think that this past year was an aberration that shouldn't be repeated. Okay. But it's also a reflection. I'm not bragging about this. Six years ago, I first ran for this job. I did a lot of studying of their budgets. And I came in and I said, I don't understand why you don't have anything listed as a reserve. Are you telling me you spent all your money every year? Yeah, that's what they told me. When they talk about software, which you need and everything else, we're a little bit bigger than that, but we've got some security issues too, but you're us as well. But, you know, we have just spent big folks to have a million dollars on new software to bring together the six departments. They're all working under the same roof. And I can tell you truthfully, that when the new administrator came in, he got there about six months before I got there. First thing he did was he heard from somebody saying, you know, we've got money. He's going, why you've got money? We had money in drawers. Because we do accept money from people. People come in, they pay fines, they're paying the probate, they're paying the registered deeds, just a mishmash. So we're trying to get rid of that and it's working. It's not been easy. And even the sheriff will tell you, it's not been easy. Department heads are elected. Not only have they elected, they don't even have a requirement as to how long they have to work. They can work a few hours a week. They can work a lot of hours a week. They get to a point, their chiefs and everything else. And then they get to a point, a budget. And of course, the budget, it's out of control unfortunately, is the sheriff's budget and the jail budget. And that's where last year we talked to the councilors and the selectmen throughout the place and we said, look, your biggest cost is a medical assisted treatment program for our inmates. And I raised that issue in my campaign to say a foot. Now that I know anything about the legislature and how to pay for people who represent them for their careers. But I didn't know that Bill had a problem with it because it was passed the last day of the session, but never went to appropriations. Most bills have appropriations statement and go to appropriations. There's another step. This bill had zero appropriations. And there's some very good people did not know they voted for zero appropriations. It's easy to get that stuff if, if you really look for it and everything. So the problem was is that we inherited a program of one point five million dollars that we started two years ago. Now, some of that's come down again, but the big problem is, is getting the state to pay the fur mandate that they gave us. Who voted for that? You didn't vote for it. I didn't vote for it. No taxpaying citizens voted for it in this county. It was all done at the legislature. And then they kind of hide, they run it, everything else. Well, we're going to make some progress on it. I'm not going to tell you when it did a hundred percent, but we are getting some progress on it. And it will help again with our taxes moving forward. The only time thing, I don't know what we're going to do. It's way too much. I'm interested to hear the chief talk about merging people and hours and stuff like that. I, or you, for instance, what he's talking about with the hours of thirty-six and forty-eight, the non-standard work, which, which particularly worked well in that jail. You know, unfortunately, they signed a contract then that basically says we work eight hours a day and then, you know, then afterwards you're paying your overtime. And I don't, you know, if they work, they should be paid overtime. That's good. But we got to find more cooperation to try to get by. So those are some of the key issues that we're talking about. We are talking a lot with other towns about emergency management. We've got a new director in there. He's doing a great job. I'm talking to her. We're talking about fire departments and what they particularly need. We got to do these things. Because if we don't, somebody's not going to have it. And we have other communities in that area who've got a real problem. We're talking to the police, to the sheriff's office. We're working with legislation to get more people covering out here. You're lucky to be in Monmouth and Winter, but I live in Winter, so I'm lucky too. But the point is, is that we have our own council. And we know we're paying more for it and everything else. But unfortunately, some of the smaller towns can never get together and do this type of thing. But we're going to have to do something to make sure people are safe out here and they've got the protection they need. There is no question about the fact that the calling of people, it's like a crap shoot. If somebody's available, you're going to save that day. I wish I'd saved that day. These people are really busy that I found out. I think they do a wonderful job. But people want to see the, the law enforcement. So having said that, I'll be back again. You're in trouble. I, I like to go to meetings. I, I said, I've got almost two pages of notes here. And it's, uh, if you are talking about things that are being talked about throughout the entire county. And my county goes from the bottom of Pittston to the top of Vienna. So I usually get there in a couple of days either way. But thank you for letting me sit here tonight and let you talk. I appreciate it. And I will send all of you my information. I'll send it to you via email. I'm sorry I ran out of cards, but I knew, I knew that it's going to come and everything, but I have to say to you, we need you at certain points to help us. If you'd like what we're trying to do, and we're out working with the Main Municipal Association, we're working with the Sheriff's Association. We're obviously working with our Old County Commissioners Association. And we need a more active legislative presence. Because they do listen when it's a little pressure on them. And we've just seen that we've had quite a few changes take place. And there's going to be a lot of legislation coming at us fast. And unfortunately, one of our priorities is to get an understanding from the state is when are you going to pay the bill? And what proportion are you going to pay for us, how do we fund the inmates? Believe it or not, it's a floating number. It's floating anywhere between fifty percent and ninety percent. When you don't know, it's very difficult to put together a budget. And then at the same time, you, you don't know how many people are going to have too on the other side of it. As far as the M H E is concerned, its primary purpose is to get people and treat them for addictions. When you look at the program, even though I spoke about I'm concerned with funding it, it's a fantastic. It's one of the best things that we have done to treat an inmate, make sure they get the drugs that they need. They actually take them. And that we provide associated services that continue to when they leave the jail, there will be some place to continue the treatment for. And we that. Our early prognosis after a year and a half is that I don't know if we've seen two people that have gone through this program come back. That's incredible. We would get fifty percent of these people coming back. That's the type of program for me that will end up saving us all, like I said. And I mention that because I, as I was sitting here thinking, I was just remembering, I went to KJ today. I'm not sure why. That's all I got, right? But I looked at the court cases and everything. It seemed like nine out of ten of them was. It seemed like nine out of ten of them was for drugs. That's what it's all about. And so the problem has not gone away. The solution is, I think, closer than what we thought when we saw this problem in the beginning. But we have to spend a lot of money to do it. But we're the only ones to do it really in such a manner. I say, keep doing it.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh. We did, we did slide more reports.
Yeah.
You've heard everybody say with that, uh, public comment.
Yes, I do have a question. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Go ahead, Chuck. Yeah, it, it's about the tax evaluation. Um, and it is one thing I don't quite understand. With today's values and the mill rate, if I call that neutral. Once the new evaluations come in, doesn't the mill rate lower itself to keep it neutral? Is that the way it works?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's not an instant tax increase, it's just everybody's, um, everybody's responsibility gets adjusted for the next time.
That's correct. Chuck, the, the, uh, the logic behind this, uh, goes back a couple of years. When we realized that it had been seventeen years since we'd had boots on the ground. To evaluate every property in the town of Monmouth.
Yep.
We'd done a statistical adjustment about seven or eight years ago. That kind of said, if you're in this category, then this is your new thing, right? But, uh, that didn't, that didn't really look at it property by property. And so the, the point of the evaluation, revaluation. Is to go property by property, make sure that everybody is paying their fair share based on the market reality of today. And, and then to adjust the mill rate based on that new value. So, uh, the values most certainly are going to go up. Uh, the mill rate most certainly will go down. And the net effect on the total amount of dollars raised will, will, will have. The, the, the revaluation will have no effect on the total dollars raised.
Okay, that's perfect. And another comment I have is, if there are some windows that aren't working in our, in, in, in the public's offices. Wouldn't that be kind of important to get those windows at least working? If there's an emergency, you can't escape from your office.
Yeah, there's just no money to do it.
Well, I mean, it, I'm not talking about new windows. I mean, they, they can't be repaired.
They're, they're original to the building. I mean, Mark took that a couple of them before.
I, I have worked on them. It's one of those things, if you can get them open, but then you need a person inside and a person outside to get them closed and secure again. So if you had an emergency, you could get out through them.
Okay.
And then we'd worry about what would happen after the emergency to get them shot.
Yeah. Okay, I was just curious about that. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks.
Anyway, yes, Joe.
The reason why, I'm, I'm a big believer in comments, okay? So I just wanted you to know, but one comment that I see about your evaluation, but I think I saw it in another community too. Was that you're only gonna do part of it. Like, I think in Monmouth, it was just the newer houses were getting evaluated.
The whole, whole thing is being done.
No, it's a complete revaluation, they're gonna visit every.
This is great.
They're gonna visit every house in town.
And say, no, I was there when they said it's hundred percent.
The, the, the reality of our situation is that we did go through a time in the pandemic when we did not have a code enforcement person. And, uh, there was a time when the town was unable to issue permits. And we had to say to people who wanted to build, uh, we can't stop you from building. So there, there may be some unassessed assets out there that we are unaware of, maybe.
But the fact of the matter is, is that everybody knows that from, from two thousand and seventeen to today, home values have more than doubled. Right. So every community in the state is either trying to do a revale, they're trying to raise money for it, or they're doing one. There, there is every assessment firm that's from Connecticut North is fully booked for the next three years. It's just, it's just, it's just gonna depend on where you are in the schedule. I mean, I could list off forty towns right now that I know that are either doing one at the moment, just completed one, or are doing one in the next two years. It's just, the values have just, everything has changed. And the building materials are, are a lot more than they used to be, the, what people are paying for. Sight unseen, um, is significantly higher. The Airbnb market has changed everything, um, not, not just here, but I mean, everywhere. So it's just, it's a different place than it was in two thousand and seven.
Well, and I think it's important also to set the record straight because I've seen a lot of nonsense on social media. About the point of the revaluation. And, uh, the, the reason I voted for this revaluation. Was because it's important for everybody to know that we are all paying our fair share. Of the total town expenses. That's the point.
Yes, it is. It's, it's about fairness, really.
Any other public comment? Next is to consider the responses to the real estate broker request for proposal.
So we've got three, um, reviewing them. I don't, you know, I think they're all perfectly capable of doing it. The prince is the, just the, the fee structure in the back and whoever you folks feel. They'll do the best job, I think any of them can do it. I don't have any objection to any of, I don't have any concerns with any of them, so it's really just a choice for you folks to make.
Can you contrast the fee structure for us, please?
Sure.
I'm going to recuse myself from this, which means I am going to move from two.
So the first one is from Integrity Homes Real Estate Group. They're proposing a commission rate of five percent. Um, I'll just, I'm not gonna, I won't get into detail of everything, but basically it's a five percent commission rate on, on everything. Pine Point Realty. Uh, has a flat commission of twenty five hundred dollars for purchases under seventy five thousand. And a commission of three point five percent for purchases over seventy five thousand. They're based out of, uh, green. First one is, I don't know if I think, but. It says Monmouth on it, but.
Her, her office.
Okay, yes, okay. Uh, and, uh, last one is from Fontaine Family. Out of, I think they're in Auburn. Um, and their commission structure is under a hundred thousand is ten percent, a hundred to two fifty is seven, two fifty one to five hundred thousand is six. And I wouldn't get to go, it doesn't, we're, we're not gonna sell the tax-free property. I don't think we need to worry about the million dollars enough, but hey.
So if we were to do an apples to apples comparison, based on the fee structures. Uh, Fontaine Realty would be higher than the others.
Yes.
And Pine Point, you said, twenty five hundred dollar flat fee for less than seventy five thousand dollars and a three point five percent. Greater than seventy five thousand dollars.
Correct.
And the first one was, I believe it was five percent, uh, flat. And what's, what's the, the name of the first vendor again?
Integrity Homes.
You are a huge, you're a thing.
I will abstain from voting, it's part of the discussion, yes.
To that. If you're gonna, if you're gonna refuse.
So I'm, I'm not gonna take part in it.
Should we be basing it on what the percentage that they're going to?
The, uh, the RFP does not, that does not prescribe a particular way in which you're gonna decide. It's, it's, it says that it's in whatever you folks determine is in the best interest of the town.
Can you give us an idea of, uh, what we might be facing in terms of the. Uh, number of properties under seventy five thousand dollars versus the ones that would be greater than seventy five thousand?
The, the ones that are available today, I don't, I don't think, I could, I can't give you a very good idea, but I would say that. Um, most, most foreclosures that actually make it to sale are foreclosed upon because nobody wants them.
That's right, they're good.
So they're not, they're, they're generally not valuable.
That's right.
Because if they were, they would go to a bank and get a loan to pay their taxes.
It'd be a rare case where.
Correct.
But you know, like for instance, um, let's say you have a, a property that's not, that's not worth very much. Still have to go through the advertising, there are certain sets. That things that you're gonna have to pay for.
Correct.
And so a flat fee of, what is it? Twenty five hundred isn't, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Well, and the way that, the way that the, the law states now is it, 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 it virtually makes no difference to us what it costs. To dispose of it as long as we get our taxes back, because we don't. The municipality has no benefit from dealing with these at all anymore because there's no excess funds to do anything with at all. If, if we don't have anybody to give it to, it goes to the state's unclaimed property fund.
No windfalls.
Right. So what we pay the brokers really isn't that important, yeah.
It's relevant to the per, to the, to the former owner of the property.
Correct, yes.
But not to, not to the town of Monmouth, because they're gonna be holding us harmless of whatever expenses that we have.
All we're gonna get is the, is the, is the taxes back.
So then what? How would we, how should we determine which would be best for the town?
You could look at the, you could look at the fee structure, or you could look at, uh, the proposal and see which one you think might have the most. Um, experience or relevant experience to the community. I think all three of these are local people, so I'm sure they all know the, the market around here. The only one, the, the only one of these three that I've dealt with on any, I mean, to be, to be honest, the only one of these that I've dealt with on any foreclosure sales. In town is the, is the Fontaine. I've dealt with them three times since I've been here in two years. But you take that for what it's worth, I mean, it's just, it could just be a coincidence, I mean, I have no idea, but.
There, there are a couple Fontaine people here, I mean, uh, relatives.
I think that's why Chris is sitting over there.
Oh, yeah.
That's not, that's not relevant to where he's sitting.
And you want, the agenda item says to consider the responses. Are we supposed to choose tonight?
You do not have to, but these are, these are the responses that we got. At some point, if you wanna move any of these foreclosures forward, we have to have a broker, we can't do anything.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to say three.
Yeah.
The same three, but.
And we've, we've put this out twice to get these three.
Right.
And the second time, I, I, I solicited responses specifically from every real estate company I could think of in, basically, this area. Kind of everywhere from, I, I sent them specific emails to their contact us email addresses. And these were the three responses.
Okay.
The one person with most experience, I guess, is, is Kelly himself, is Fontaine.
Just with me being here, that doesn't, that doesn't mean they, you know, I, I have no idea, other than what they put in here. Who, who sold more houses in, in Monmouth or in this, in this area. I was just, I was just trying to, that's all I could say, is that's the only one I've dealt with in my time here.
Nonetheless, if, I mean, the, the rate of commission is relevant to the proposal simply because. Uh, we, we, the town is gonna be held harmless of whatever commission is paid. But, uh, it does help the transaction a bit if the commission is lower than if it is higher. Because the property owner gets to keep a little more money. So the transaction moves a little more smoothly with a lower commission than a higher commission. And, and there's also, you know, we don't wanna be. I, I think we wanna respect the property rights of the property owner who's obligated to pay their taxes. So, uh, in that regard, I would make a motion that we, uh, approve the Pine Point proposal. Seems to me like that, uh, in the end, if it's, if you're satisfied that that proposal. Meets sort of the minimum requirements of someone who's licensed, who's got some experience, who's capable of, uh, closing a deal. And representing the town in a reasonable way. Um, it seems like their, uh, commission rate, uh, is, uh. Either the lowest or near the lowest. It would only be higher if it were a, a ten thousand dollar property, as opposed to a seventy five thousand dollar property. Um, at seventy five thousand dollars, the commission rate would be three point three percent. Instead of three point five above seventy five. And it's also, as, as Joe has pointed out, twenty five hundred dollars. Is kind of a flat rate that would cover all the time and expense of, you know. The overhead of setting up a transaction and, you know.
Advertising.
Advertising and all the stuff you gotta, all the hoops you gotta go through. Whereas someone who's only charging five percent is probably not gonna spend a whole lot of time on a ten thousand dollar property. So, seems to me like incentives, uh, are the best fit. For the town with the, in the Pine Point proposal. So I would make a motion. For the purpose of generating some discussion and bringing this to a close. I would make a motion that we approve the Pine Point proposal.
Second. So, uh.
We discuss it now, right? So we can discuss now.
You can discuss it more, you know.
I don't know. If you wanna discuss it, sure.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know this guy Zach Blair. I just, I know, I know the other people. Yeah, and I do too, and I think they're, they're pretty good people. Yeah. Pretty good salespeople. And this guy's name is Zachary, Zachary Blair.
She, he's the, he's the one with the license, but I believe it's, I believe it's like his, um. I think it's his wife, but that's the one that's, um, she's the one that's been emailing and asking if we made a decision. Yeah, I think her name's on here, Brittany. Is his, is his name Blair?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't know if it's his wife, but they're related somehow, I assume it's his wife.
Brittany Blair, yeah.
So she's the one that signed the proposal, but he's the one with the license.
So I, I'm just going through the process here. Most of the properties, I mean, this is the thought process that I've got in, in the town. If most of these properties are gonna be ones that nobody else wants, wants, no other bank is gonna finance. People have no access to being able to pay their bill. Then we're looking at a, a large number of properties that are gonna be under seventy five thousand dollars. Yeah. And given that case, um, a, a percentage of a seventy five thousand dollar transaction. Um, is, uh, operating on that is gonna be, uh, uh. The wrong incentive. It seems to me like, uh, the idea of a flat rate for, uh, some of these, uh, properties. That are, you know, the bottom of the barrel properties makes sense when it's a small thing. We just wanna get them back on the tax rolls, we wanna get them marketed properly. Um, and a. And a flat rate of $2,500 bucks seems like if someone's willing to go through that, that's what makes sense to me.
If somebody, like if somebody thought they were gonna get 10% of the sale.
Yep.
They would be more apt to work harder, or maybe to.
For a $20,000 property, maybe not.
10% of 75,000.
Good.
10% of 75 would be 15,000 bucks.
Yeah.
Oh, 10% of 75 is gonna be 7,500 bucks.
Yes.
Right, so, so, true. We'll pay it.
7,500 is not a big brokerage commission.
And maybe not.
Right, like they said, in today's market, everything's three, four hundred thousand and up, and they're getting.
Right, and they're getting 6% or 5% of that.
So they go into it knowing they're making $2,500 and that's what they're gonna make. They're gonna market them all equally whether they're a $10,000 property or 75,000.
And the property owner pays that amount?
Yeah.
Which seems fair to me.
It's kind of a good way of them looking at it as a real estate broker and say, I'll do it for a flat fee.
I'll do it for a flat fee. Also, the town's best chance to receive their taxes.
Right.
Quickly.
Quickly, yeah.
So, and you made a motion to Pine Point do it, and I would second it, so all those in favor?
There you go, I'll let them know.
Okay.
Looks even better.
Next is to consider a banking.
So this, I apologize, it was supposed to be in your packet. I just didn't put it in there, so I dropped it in front of you tonight. If you, if you want time to read it, you can just, you can just table it. There's no time constraint on this. It's just, my thought process is that we haven't done one of these in a, in a real long time. The, the market is quite a bit different in the banking world, and they're, they're all able to offer more services because interest rates are a little higher. And several banks have sort of tried to gear themselves around municipal banking now. It used to be a very, it's still very specialized, but there are more people that are trying to play the game because they want our cash is what they want, because they're all, they're borrowing money at high interest rates and they want our cash so they can lend it out to other people. And towns usually are sitting on a couple million dollars, so they, they would like to have our business. My thought, as I said, was I am not gonna just, well, if you tell me to, I will, but I would like to bank with somebody who is more of a local main bank. I'm not really that interested in entertaining TD Bank or Bank of America or somebody where there's nobody in Maine that I can talk to. So there's going to be, I was gonna selectively go to sort of the more prominent municipal banks that are out there right now and just sort of offer it to them to see if, see who will respond. I know I at least have four that would, that would love to bid on it if I gave it to them today.
Who's our current bank?
Bangor Savings Bank.
And where did this template come from?
This template came from a couple of towns and then a couple of the banks all use a template, which I have taken about twenty pages out of. Because what they're looking for is they're looking, so like when the city of Augusta bids out their banking, for example, they tier their investment strategy. So they have, it'll say, we wanna have a tier of one to two years, another tier of three to four, a tier of eight to 10, so that not all their investments, all their CDs come all, all at once. So they have to figure it out. So they, they tier everything to try to get the most interest rates. We're not that sophisticated. We don't have somebody that can sit around and monitor that stuff all day long. So there's a lot of detail that goes into a, into a larger community that we just don't need. So I really made it as basic as possible. We need courier services because we don't have a local bank in, in our community. So our staff can't, can't drive deposits. We need someone to pick up the deposits. I want someone to pay for our checks because we shouldn't have to pay for our checks. I want, just things like that. So that's kind of what's in here. They want our business, they'll pay for our checks, they'll pay for our courier services, they'll pay to swap out our change, they will do those things. That's pretty much what it asks for.
I made a motion, we approve the banking RFP draft.
On the motion by Chris, selected by Ken to approve the RFP proposal for banking services. All those in favor? Let me ask, let's ask you here. So, for instance, there are some X's here that's not filled in.
Yeah. Yes, I'll be filling those in. I just didn't do it because I've been kind of working on this over the summer and I kept trying to, I kept trying to, just, I kept kicking it down the road to deal with. So I wanna be able to put the most accurate information in those, so I know what our average bank balance is. Obviously the dates, you know, yeah, I thought, I thought I'd have this due on September 26th, so you can see, I'm a few months behind at this point. Yeah, it's a goal.
Not that we had anything really going on this summer, you know.
Is it a big deal to drive to Winter?
Well, I don't think you ever wanna task any staff members.
Like what bank?
So.
International, Bank of America Savings Bank?
Right, so if they were our banker, we could go there. But like right now, what I have to do, because the, the local credit union here in town won't, won't give us change. So whenever I need change, the, I'm generally the one, because I feel the most comfortable being the one holding the money because I'm the bonded person and I don't wanna make the staff, if something happens to them, you know, lugging around cash, I want that to be me. So I leave the town office and go to Augusta to go to the Bangor Savings Bank branch to make change. So they have enough quarters and dollar bills and things like that for the day. So it's not really, it's not the greatest scenario. Now, I don't wanna say anything bad about that bank because they've been, they've been an excellent partner for us and chances are, if we go with one of these smaller banks, Bangor is still gonna run our payroll because they're one of the only banks that offers payroll services that, so that's just something just to consider. So we may have a, a kind of a dual relationship.
Well, and the whole concept of employees driving around with town funds.
And what we've been trying to get away from with handling cash.
It's not a lot of money. I don't want you to think that I'm, I got a million dollars in my car. It's like a couple hundred dollars, but I just wanna be the one doing it instead of somebody else.
Risk that our own is to put out a beatbox.
Okay, so I'm ready to vote. Then, all those in favor, our motion.
Thank you.
Next is to consider a property abatement for Richard and Lane Amaro.
Well, I can read the memo if you want, it's pretty straightforward. Donna's recommending this. She says they applied for a homestead exemption, they did not receive this in error. Mrs. Amaro dropped off the completed application last October, however, it is currently lost or misfiled. Considering the amount of paperwork returned to this office, these occurrences are relatively few and far between, but I have attached the necessary paperwork for your signatures if you have any questions. So it would just be for the one year.
What's the amount that's baited?
Four hundred and three dollars and eighty nine cents.
Four hundred?
Four hundred and three dollars and eighty nine cents.
Because of missing paperwork and it's a rental active.
Oh, with the home set exemption.
Yeah, because the form has to be in my April 1st. And it wasn't, they, it wasn't there, we couldn't find it or whatever, so it just didn't get applied.
They said they did it, we believe it.
Yeah, basically.
Fine, I'm in favor of you.
I don't know.
Which I think Donna might be getting a little, little, little soft in her old age because she's usually a real hardliner about this April 1st date. But if she thinks they did it, then I believe her.
Is he credible?
I think he's, well, he's a graduate of Monmouth Academy, 1985.
Best, best year, best, best class year ever.
Ever, 1985.
1985. I think that's why she approved it.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the property tax abatement for Richard and Amaro.
And I'll second that.
The class of 1985 is gonna stick together. It's better than before approved.
Yeah, who made the motion?
So there's a motion to approve the, the abatement.
Do we actually, do we actually know he was living there?
Made by, seconded by Chris. All of those in favor of the coming abatement? Yeah, next is, gotta get out of. Bit of a warrant for fiscal year of 2425, number 10.
Natchalderston Sun, Wagon Road, paving $12,800. All States Construction, paving Wilson Pond Road, $60,876. Blue Rock Earthworks, $2,772. Transport for the transfer station. Blue Star Accounting and Advising, this is our pre-audit, $5,437. Mark. Mary J. Smith. Look, it says spring.
Yes.
$1,496.
Spring plays round.
Bank of Humane Society, $1,835. Main Equalization Consultants, the Assessor, $2,437. Main Technology Group, Phones, IT Services, $4,666. Main, thank you. Main Waste to Energy, $4,114. Marquee Signs, this is for the Gateway Signs, $2,705. I'm gonna say Isabel, because I don't know how to pronounce it, and $3,158. Whitney Bowes, postage for, basically for the election, $1,212. Bernaldi Energy, diesel fuel, $7,050. State of Maine, your motor vehicles, $6,504. Haggard Objects Conservation, it's, I believe it's the bell in renovation, bell repair for the building next door, $8,800. Town of Winter, ambulance service, $39,873. Traction Heavy Duty, Public Works Equipment Needs, $1,210. Frame for, this is the Compton Hall, so far, $3,555.15 for a total of $531,761.15.
I make a motion, we approve fiscal year 2425, number 10.
Next. With a motion by Chris, selected by Ken to approve warrant number 10 for fiscal year 2425. Thank you. Before we adjourn, the issue of insurance over at the Old Academy, sent that in the packet, what are we supposed to act on it?
No, not really. I'm trying, I'm setting up a meeting between the, at the request of the Building Committee with the architect, their engineer, and the insurance carrier to try to either smooth out whatever the concerns are at this point. But there's nothing really for you to do.
Yes. So they've, they've notified us that there are some concerns, but we're still covered?
No, we're not.
We're not covered, we're not, until we resolve those problems.
That's correct. So if you would like me to, in the interim, I am happy to go and try to get a private carrier if you would like to, or we can wait for it to resolve itself, I don't know. That's.
Is, is there liability coverage? There's no coverage at all, if someone goes, if someone gets hurt?
There's liability coverage on all municipal properties. Right now, there's no coverage on the structure itself.
Okay, so falls down, we don't get any?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I move we adjourn.
Yes.
Justin? Yes, can we make sure that we have that on the agenda for discussion that our next?